7:01. I'd like to call town of Wakefield Planning Board meeting for May 11th, 2021 to order. Consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click on the following link. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial-in number in the meeting in the passcode. We've been doing this for a while, so I'm not sure what's going to happen after the state opens up, but we'll figure it out from there. This evening's, let's see, let's go down and do a roll call for who's here. Matthew Lowery. You're on mute, but I can see you.
I'm here.
Yep, Megan Minasali.
Here.
And Theo Noel.
Here, thank you.
Theo, welcome to our board and congratulations on the election. It was great having Joanne Schooler on the board and we value her time and input and glad to have Theo you here with your experience too. And I know you and I met and went for a walk to go over a lot of what the planning board does. And we've walked and you've been attending meetings for a while now, so it's exciting. And we are putting together some sort of a checklist for onboarding new planning board members. But that's, and I think Matt mentioned you were sworn in, correct?
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you. So you went to town hall and did all of that.
Yeah, that was nice. No, and that, you know, thanks for the warm welcome and it's a pleasure to get to work with all of you. And I appreciate the work y'all have been doing over the past year or so.
Thanks, Theo. And just so everybody knows too, we are short one board member as Bill Diamore resigned, so the town council will be publicly, or I guess what's the right way to put that, sending out.
Posted.
Posting, thank you. Where are they going to post it to? But I guess it gets posting the call for applications.
Yeah.
Yep. Thanks. Item number two this evening, approval of minutes from April 13th and April 22nd, which was sort of a special meeting. It wasn't a scheduled meeting. Did everybody get a chance to review the April 13th meetings, meeting minutes?
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions or comments regarding the meeting minutes?
I do like the times in there, so that I like that. That helps. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Susan. That's, that was excellent. I agree.
We just need to get all boards to do that and we'll be all set, so.
Yep, yeah, thanks.
So I will make a motion to approve the April 13th, 2021 Planning Board minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Matt?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Megan?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Thank you. And the April 22nd.
And I'll make a motion to approve the April 22nd, 2021 minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
In favor of that, Matt?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
And Theo, if you're curious about approving meeting minutes that you didn't attend the meeting, but you still did receive the meeting minutes and were able to review them, so that does work.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't believe we have any actions this evening that you have to be concerned about not partaking in. For example, item number three, evangelist away. We will not be reviewing this A and R plan this evening. The plan still needs to be updated, so that will be on a future agenda. Just wanted everybody to know that. Item number four.
One thing, I just wanted to point out that just to make sure that everyone knows, we have not accepted this for review. So it should not be deemed submitted to the board at all because it was deficient in our rules and regs, so we just need to be aware of that, especially with A and R plans, because if we even appear to accept them, the clock starts running and we have 21 days or it gets conditional approval, so in this case, it wouldn't have mattered because plan was unsigned and deficient anyways, so it would not have been recorded on the registry if they tried to go forward with that, so.
Thanks, Matt. Does anybody have any questions about what Matt mentioned about the 21 days and how the A and R works?
It's a little bit more, I do, a little more process. How were they notified that it was deficient or?
Through email. So the attorney sent an email and responded from the planning board, and I copied Matt that the plan is just not satisfactory, so they withdrew the plan.
Okay.
So by doing that, we don't, that 21 days does not start until our board officially reviews the plan.
Okay.
So Theo, what would normally happen in this case? So if the applicant brought the plan before the board and say they believe that it was sufficient and had everything, and we said it, it doesn't, you can not submit it, but if they chose to submit it, then we have to act on it within 21 days. So normally when, and what can happen at that point, if we accept it, we can instantly, you know, reject it and vote it down, which they really don't want to do because they've got to, you know, go back and it kind of puts a mark on it that it was submitted and and I'm not sure what the timeframe is to start that again, but normally applicants will say, okay, I'll fix the plan and come back at your next meeting. So there is, statutorily, we have, we have to act on it. And the problem is sometimes if we don't have a next month's meeting, next scheduled meeting, it will go four weeks. And at that point, they're entitled to have it signed by the town clerk and it gets a provisional endorsement and, or not provisionally, it gets an endorsement. How you would frame that, but you can go forward from there, so.
Yeah, without any review or comments, so then.
Correct, yeah.
Thanks, Matt. The next item on our agenda, the discussion here on the lake. So this is something that, I believe this is our third meeting. And the last meeting we had as a board, we came to the conclusion, like, we have to have, like, what is the outcome that we're looking for? Joanne Schooler and I worked on this with some input from Erin Kolkinda and obviously the board and some public comment throughout the meeting. So this is something that obviously as a board, for me, working on this, I see the possible outcome is a, an article zoning, some type of amendment to our current zoning or a new overlay district for the lake. Whatever that outcome is and whatever we figure that out as a board, I believe we should prepare this and be ready for, to submit for town meeting in the fall. And as we all know, that's where any type of zoning amendment or change or overlay district, whatever it might be, would be voted on by the town and it needs two-thirds votes to be approved. So looking at the discussions that we've had and thinking about a purpose, zoning bylaw changes around Lake Quanapowit is really the essence of this. A lot of the comments that came, just in a quick review, is, is it a distance from the lake? Or is it a mapped out street? Is it a certain area? So when we looked at the different places that we could work with, it really broke down to the limited business districts and the districts, the business districts around the lake, really leaving alone the single single in general residential areas as well as the municipal districts. So we did have maps and we can pull them up again tonight if that helps. But I really, as a board, I think our goal tonight is to come up with that one tagline that really supports what we want to do. So I know Joanne is not on the board right now, but I know she's here present tonight. There's a few other people. I don't want to go to public comment yet, but I want our board to discuss to see, is there something here that we know protecting the lake, preserve, keep safe, control pollution? So we talked about this and we talked about how we could connect the other boards. So for example, the last scheduled meeting we had at the beginning of April, we invited the, well, we invited a lot of boards, so from the Conservation Commission to the Environmental Sustainability Committee and a few others. So I think that's the right direction is to include other boards to help us understand or people or work together with other boards. So that's how I feel about it. One that we should tonight come up with, what our outcome needs to be. And if it's a zoning bylaw change, that we need to get on it as far as, like, set a schedule, set a timeline, and that way we can have some public comment and really shape this into what it needs to be for town meeting. And of course, we will solicit Town Council, Tom Mullen, to make sure that what we're writing and how it works with certain parts. There are other groups that we've talked about, talked with in the past, like Dan Lieber, about the zoning bylaw review committee. Sorry if I'm saying that correctly, but there's also the town charter. So it would be good to get input there. So what we're proposing is written correctly and ties into, it doesn't leave any loopholes or doesn't contradict other things that are in the zoning bylaws. So I'm open to this discussion, to what our board thinks we want to do with this. Did we lose Matt? I saw him blink off.
Yeah, it looks like.
Yeah. Oh, he lost, he lost internet. I'm asking if he could rejoin on his phone.
Yeah.
I saw him disappear. I didn't take it personally. I thought as soon as I said, we need to do this and he's gone. I'm like, where'd he go? No, Matt, we need you.
We do.
All right. Well, let's discuss as we wait for Matt to come back on. And I'd like to hear from you, Megan and Theo, about your ideas on how this could be. And Theo, I know you attended this meeting where we discussed a lot of this and we, we went into the discussion topics. And just to refamiliarize ourselves with this, it's this neighborhood business that's on the other side of Lowell and this business district that wraps around. This is the very top of the lake and you can see here. Just a quick review while we wait for Matt to jump back on. This is the area that most concerns me as we travel down north Ave and to here where Vets Field. So there's business district, business district along here. This is Elm and Elm Circle. It goes down here, so auto body cleaners, corner, is that still a gas station? I don't know. So this whole area right here, that's business district. So with a special permit, 60 feet multifamily. My thought is, why doesn't this become neighborhood business, which limits to 35 feet? Doesn't mean it can't be multifamily with, or mixed use with some retailer restaurant on the first floor or business on the first floor, but it would limit it to 35 feet. I absolutely love this idea and I think the idea would be that we name the streets and we don't do a distance from the lake, but we actually name the streets and the properties if needed.
Yeah, I, I would, I think that specificity is actually resolves the, the distance problem that we were encountering before. I think strategically, it actually can be positioned as a benefit to the existing landowners because you're really talking about, you know, if the intention of the rezone is to make for a much more positive future land uses and which, which would be supporting, in this case, supporting the businesses across from Veterans Field. And so they're, they're benefiting from that. They're not, they're not losing potential economic value of not being able to go up to 60 feet rather. It's, you're actually preserving, I think, all of this, you know, quality of life amenities that would make it more attractive for the business.
So we, Theo, we could do this in two different ways. We could have an overlay district for the lake that just reduces the size of any building to 35 feet, no matter what. Or we can look at it to rezone the limited business, I'm sorry, the business in this area to neighborhood business. So I see two different clear paths for this. There could be others. I just don't see them yet. That's why we need to discuss and then we'll.
Yeah.
Sorry, Theo, go ahead.
No, no, I'll defer to Megan.
I know we had some questions in regards to like the cleaning up of the questions at the, at the top of the lake in regards to like that weird municipal space. And then also the, I think as a, as a board, we should make it an outcome decision in regards to cleaning up this, the business versus neighborhood business weird zoning lines that are currently listed. I think that that's, I, I don't, I don't understand the, how development could right happen based off of all these different, three different parameters in regards to municipal district, the neighborhood business, the business piece of that land is now in the 200 to 400 Quanapowit. So there's a lot of moving pieces in this general vicinity that circled right there in the red to get cleaned up. And I know we had a couple of questions around that and I don't know if we've gotten any clarity. I know Erin was going to look into that weird blue gap, I believe. So I don't.
I want to say it's this right here. That's the gap in the blue.
I think so.
This piece of land. So when, I know I'm zooming fast, so close your eyes. But it seems like it fits the same.
So yes, I was looking into that and there are some maps where I think we need to clean up some of our maps that where it looked like it was still under that layer. But I don't have a definite answer yet, so I can definitely get you one. Because it's owned by the town, so it's not like privately owned or anything. I'm not sure why it's not colored that way yet, so I'll figure that out. Sorry.
No, that's okay. This is, I don't think this is something that could solve right away, but brought to the attention. So while we are writing this, it cleans it up. And I think Megan has a good, a pretty good idea where, like, if we are going to write this, how do we include all of these pieces into the same written article? Or does it become two separate articles? Because it is that important and it's, it's very different. Do we have a map cleaning up article? And then we have a rezoning of business to neighborhood business in that southwestern corner of the lake?
As, as well as making a decision in regards to the northwest corner, I guess is the best description of that, where the current, that's north, I would, I guess I'm calling that the northeast, the northwest, where the car dealership area is.
Yeah.
Want to make a determination on, on, on that area as well. Yes, that one.
Yeah, I'd have to look back in my notes and I believe, I don't know, Joanne might have brought this up too. That's pretty far back from the lake, but it still is visible from the lake, even though this property, Office Park, we, it's just, that's a limited business already. And, and that with a special permit obviously can go up to 60. Okay.
Yeah, and Matt is back.
Is Matt back? Oh, hi, Matt.
I'm back.
Okay, good. Have you been able to listen?
Yeah.
We've been reviewing those three different areas of the lake that we had discussed in the past and talked about this being a gap in the municipal map. Sorry for the quick scroll, but that gap matches the other gap and Erin's going to look into that. We discussed, I discussed how I feel this is the most important part for us to focus on, where the business district could be neighborhood business. In two different ways this could work, the, there could be just a zoning change from business to neighborhood for these two areas. And we could see how far that goes down north and limit that. Or we do an overlay for the lake and name the streets that are inside of this and we just say 35 feet.
Well, one thing, and we've been dealing with this on a lot of the most recent zoning changes is the town's gone from doing a distance from a street to actually just including actual lots.
Yes.
So if we're going to do this, it's kind of hard to just pick a distance from something. We're going to have to actually pick out every single parcel that wants that, you know, needs to be rezoned and call them out.
Could we use a screen? As a boundary?
We would still need to call on, you know, you'd still need to have a a map figure that would go before town meeting, so people knew exactly which parcels were in there, so. And this is all from GIS. Originally, the zoning maps were done by hand and it was easier to scale off of what someone believed to be Main Street and just go that distance back, so. I'm not a big fan on necessarily just changing lots either because GIS maps get updated and suddenly things change and you kind of lose track of what zone things can potentially be in with subdivisions and, and splitting of lots, things like that, so.
Understood it, especially when we see this odd pie shape that seems to go in the middle of almost a prospect in Elm.
Well, that most likely is a distance that was from something, so.
Right. Or the center of. And you can see, I don't know how accurate these maps are, but you could right, because I, I believe this is the train track. And this distance between here is North Ave.
Well, what most likely has happened is at some point someone scanned in a zoning map and overlaid it and this is what you end up getting, so.
Yep.
I think, yeah, I think this is something maybe as we continue with the technology we have now, I think we could do a much better job with these maps. So that might be something we want to kind of put in as well as, you know, what you guys were alluding to. But I think we can work on maybe at the town.
Well, does it sound like, and from what I'm gathering from the conversation, that we will be naming lots? Lots of lots. Those lots we will show, you can see here, so it would be like one, two, three, four lots, five, six, maybe seven in this area. Which are now business district, will be rezoned to neighborhood business, which would limit to 35 feet, still require a special permit for multifamily or multi-use. And I think that's where we need to really get deeper into the wording. We don't have to do that tonight, but I think that's like the A and B, 35 feet, but for special permit, it's multifamily or multi-use. These are things that we need to figure out and I think this is where we start to get input from the public and talk to Tom Mullen, Town Council, to, to figure out how this all works and to discuss with other boards and other efforts in the town.
Yeah, and I think maybe the best approach may be doing separate zoning bylaw changes, like by each section. Because if we put it as one general overlay and if it's voted down, then each area is to right remain as it was. If we do it each individually, then if one is approved, I think that might be better than, right, all of them not getting approved, right, by the town in a vote at, at the town meeting in the fall. And that's just one suggestion or idea.
It's a really good suggestion.
Well, these, these are going to have to be map changes as along, along with change in use, so it may need to be two separate ones. I'm not sure. But I have to get a clarification on that, so.
Right.
Because you're going to be bringing parts of some lots in and potentially parts of other lots out. And that is a map change that you'd want to have documented, so. We need, yeah, we'd have to check on that, how, what the process is.
Matt, with, with that, it makes me think that a overlay district, over a lake overlay district, might make more sense that no matter what zoning, anything in this district that we name is limited to 35 feet by special permit. The use, well, 35 feet is the maximum height, no matter what the zone it's in. I don't know if that's something we can do, but that might be an easier, cleaner, I don't want to say easier, it might be a cleaner way to meet our goal. If our goal again is to protect the lake and we have to define what protect is.
Well, so are you talking a certain distance from the shore of the lake or what are you?
Well, no, because we can't do that distance from the lake. When we, when we did the multi-use overlay, that was a certain distance from the north trains, North Ave train station. And, but it, it, it was a certain radius, but it included specific, so I don't think I was involved in all of that from the beginning. But I don't know if you remember, Matt, how that was set up. And when you look at, and I, I don't want to get into the whole foundry discussion, but the properties on foundry, it seems like certain ones were selected and certain ones were not. And I don't know how a former town planner proposed that or did that.
Well, I know I did the map on that, so I know how that was put together. But that, I, I think in that case, it didn't rest, that, that overlay district didn't restrict anything. It gave you more options. So if you're going to, if you're going to do a distance from something and, but then restrict it, that is a lot more that is a lot more, uh, difficult to get through because then you have, what if a lot is half in, half out? Then you get into, you know, you need to write it, so either that lot, if this, if this area, if this distance touches a lot, does that mean the entire lot has to be within that or any part of it? So that's why you kind of really need to know and people are gonna need to know, is my property in it or not? And it's not gonna be, well, you gotta go measure from the lake at a certain time of year at high water and.
That's just, I don't think that's gonna work.
So that, that's why I'm kind of giving you a little warning that that is not gonna fly too well.
Okay, so the other direction is to do, um, as Megan suggested too, but have separate articles um, for each one, but to look at, um, clarification, so the zoning map change and the use change, those would be the two specific zoning bylaw changes that would happen. That way we can name the lots, the properties. We can be very specific about which properties they are. And, and so if they are in a business district, sorry, that's too fuzzy. If it is in a business district and we're looking at how far down North Ave, we can just be naming Elite Auto, Safe Flight, or whatever the properties are that along here.
Right. I, I think there's, um, I saw, I, I think maybe I have a question for Aaron, like, any feedback about language of form-based zoning codes is, does that give us any, um, advantage here? Uh, and, uh, you know, it's a, it's a little bit of a, uh, six and one, half dozen the other, if we really do want to be going, uh, I, I, I think it's advantageous to go lot by lot in, in some limited ways, uh, because you already, then it's more defined and focused. So, so the, the first question is, does, is there any advantage, um, to form-based zoning code language that helps us? I think get around some of these sticky lickets.
Um, I don't have the answer right now, um. I just wanted to go back real quick as I want to chime in with that mixed use thing real quick. I think it was like twenty-five hundred feet from the, um, the train. But yeah, it gets kind of tricky, I think, um, how to find where we want to, like the parcels and everything. I need to think about it and also I think this is like bigger than, you know, the leak and everything. I think we have to look at our zoning in general, um, and our definitions of everything as well. Um, but Theo, let me get back to you. Um, I don't have an answer right now, um, but.
Okay, um, I, I, I would commit to, to doing research regarding, um, the use of overlay districts to restrict height rather like, and, uh, and to also look into some of, some of this language.
And Theo, just to understand too, um, I have to go back a while and I know you have a background in urban planning and and, and with your current position to your, your, might be more in tune with this, but form-based zoning works more with the relationship of like the heights and spaces between buildings and not just the buildings, correct?
That's, uh, yeah, I, I do have only a basic now, like.
Okay.
Not, not, that's why I wanted to do the research a little bit more.
Right, I start to, I remember, um, Christopher Alexander has a book, Pat Language, which is like required reading as an architect or design, urban designer, and you might have run across it, but in there it, it speaks to, and Jane Jacobs also gets into this, um, with her writings, how form-based zoning, um, helps create communities and helps scale things to the right proportions for people to enjoy at safe, in safe ways, uh, whether it's crossing a street or the, the right heights for lights, the right types of trees that go in, so it, it really pulls into, um, all that and not just the zoning of the actual building dis- the zoning district. Uh, that's, that's what I recall, so it, it, it's interesting. Um, it almost sounds more like that is a really nice way to look at a future master plan.
Yeah.
Like, how do we look at a future master plan for Wakefield and think, well, maybe this, the town needs to be towards a form-based zoning and, and we work that way, but for, and I, I love the idea of that. But for this, Theo, if you, um, as you just volunteered, I think, if I go back in the rewind and read, listen to the recording, I think you just volunteered to find out, um, more about an overlay district and what could be the, um, best way to approach a lake overlay district.
Yes, I did, I did volunteer to do that. That's, uh, I would, I would be happy to.
Well, and I can work with you on what, and, and, and share, I guess I could share with you what I have, um, in the background from a lot of the research that, that was done to prepare for these couple of meetings. Okay, thanks, Theo.
I think form-based works better when you have a, a bigger mass of, of parcels and streets to work with than a select few basically here and there, so.
Right.
Yeah. Sorry, Matt, I mean, um, I dealt with that in Lowell with the Hamilton Canal District, if anyone's familiar with that, was like this whole part of Lowell that needed complete basically renovations, yeah, so what you were alluding to, Matt, much bigger, but yeah.
Yeah, I'm not saying it, it, elements of it might not work, but, um, I think it's gonna be a little bit, it's gonna be a lot spotty here because for the most part, we've got a lot of residential, um, and then town-owned property and only a few different districts that are potentially close to, you know, I mean, subject, which is the lake.
Would a separate, I mean, um, yeah, it's, uh, you know, now, now I'm becoming a, a proponent of something I've criticized, like, right, it's doing a lot more spot zoning to change individual parcels, particularly around Lakeside Park, if that's, you know, if that's the next area of threat, so. That's, that's why maybe my, uh, my, that's, that's where I thought form-based might help us a little bit more.
Okay. No, it's a great suggestion.
And it, it, it may, but, um, with one of the last zoning uh, changes that was attempted up at the lake where a couple lots were uh, actually next to the Knights of Columbus, you know, we, the applicant tried to get that to be general residence in order to, to basically put a a development in there that may fit a little bit better with what was up there and that did not go over too well with town meeting, so. And truthfully, I, I was skeptical at first too, but you know, once, once we got into it, I kind of became a little, you know, I, I changed my mind on that and thought that yes, that could work, so. I, I think that spot change of zoning would do well if you have buy-in from the owners and someone has something they want that might be unique to fit in there, but doing it without buy-in from anyone, I think is gonna be problematic.
I agree.
Because we need to bring this through town meeting, so. But it's not worth, you know, it's not like we can't try though, if, if that's where, the way we want to go, so. As you see, see from our map, there's a lot of, it's already spot-zoned as it is, so, um, there wasn't a lot of rhyme or reason to some of it, so.
Right, there's, there's different areas. Um, and then when you look at the overlay district for what's happening, like, especially like the Franklin School and, and different pieces like that. So, and this is a good discussion and I, I don't know how far we want to take it. I do want to, as a board, decide if we want to, um, have the public also, um, give some, uh, discussion and it would be focused on exactly what we're talking about tonight. It won't be about forty Bs and other things that have recently happened in the town. It would be really focused on this lake zoning analysis and possible district change, uh, zoning change. Um, I'm looking for let me see if I can. Okay, so, uh, back to the discussion at hand, meaning the purpose and possible outcomes. So I, I think we've tackled the possible outcomes where we have two possible outcomes. Um, that will be, uh, for town meeting in the fall. One being an overlay district and Theo's gonna look into that and I'll help him with what I have and we can, we can report that.
Sorry, real quick, you have something showing up on your computer.
Oh, hey, look at that, Microsoft Office, there we go, thanks. Thanks, Aaron, and the, the other method would be to, um, name the lots. Meaning we're, do we want to call it spot zoning or we want to call it the, what it is, meaning the map change and use change. So, one way would be to create an overlay, lake overlay district, the other way would be zoning map change and use change. And to Megan's point, that we should think of these as separate articles for each geographical area. And if, if the wording might be really close to the same for all of them, but it's just, it would, might help our effort for town meeting. Do you all agree with that? Like, these two options? As the possible outcomes? Okay, I see Matt's nodding, Theo said, yep, okay, good. Let's talk about purpose. So we talked about what protect means, preserve, safe. Um, and then we talked about pollution as these four things that become the main points and we know, town engineer Bill Reno talked about controlling pollution, what's going on there. Keep safe the people, so we talked about, you know, walking lights, rest areas, D P W. So what it comes down to is possibly these, the protecting and preserving. And when we say preserving views, that became a discussion and we don't really know, is it the view from here, is it the view from there, is it a pedestrian view, is it from the common north, is it from the top of the lake south, so, um, maybe views isn't the right word to have in there, but skip views. And maybe we just think preserve open space. And that's what I was thinking of shrinking it down to and I'd like to hear what you all think about that.
Um, I'll, I'll jump in. I, I like, uh, limiting, I like preserve open space. I, I think that's, that's simpler. The, it speaks to sort of, I, I think all the, all the public value for the lake and, uh, and, and the use of the lake.
Well, so limiting height, that doesn't do a lot to preserve open space though. And that's sort of where we're headed on this. So how, how would this fit into?
Preserve open spaces that have sunlight? I'm, I'm not trying to make a joke, I'm being serious, like a sixty-foot building, when the sun's setting in the west above Vets Field is gonna probably block the sun versus a thirty-five-foot building that will fit into the landscape and the, 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 the height of Prospect Street going up. Um, of course, I haven't done any studies on that, but that's my gut feeling.
Okay, but technically the open space would still be there, it just may be shade, you know, shadow cast, that's all, so.
Possibly, and that, that's just the first example I thought of, Matt. Then this is one part of it and maybe our zoning bylaw changes, talk about open space in a different way, so that doesn't have to do with the height of the buildings.
Yeah, I just think using that language might confuse people. When you say preserve open space, they're gonna think of large green areas and, um, pedestrian use walkways, which is the municipal district which we don't have, which we're not talking about or, um, considering changing, so I think that that might confuse people. I think that the most simplest one of protecting the lake from overdevelopment is generally what we're referencing and speaking about, so my thought is just, our purpose is item one. In, or A one I or whatever that is, protecting the lake from overdevelopment is our, um, main purpose.
Right, and that's why I wanted to go for the harder one first, because I think protecting the lake from overdevelopment, like, that's the, the main purpose. And if, I'm not sure how many of you attended Vision Twenty Thirty, um, but this preserve open space and the use of the space and pedestrian and all that, a lot of the topics, a lot of the, um, the survey, so if you haven't done the survey, please do it, go to the town website, Vision Twenty Thirty. Right, so is it that simple? Is it just protect the lake from overdevelopment and that's, that's our mantra? And that's enough.
No, I, we could go that way, but then how, how do you argue that something on the other side of the railroad tracks, across the street from the lakes needs to be restricted to protect the lake? So I'm, you know, I'm playing devil's advocate here, so.
So, and that, that's great, Matt, because we need, we need that.
Need more doubles.
Yep. It's true, and that's the discussion that came up in our last meeting was like, how far away, and this was a good example. As much as this works, it buffers one twenty-eight, but how high does this go? If any of you were at or watched the Z B A meeting and the presentation, uh, by Peter Scott, uh, and Master Plan and, um, Benjamin Thompson, sorry, if I, if I got the names right, I apologize. Um, but how this could be another stop to a train on, on the commuter rail and how this could be developed into a whole center. So it, it's like, who knows what the future is gonna be, so we don't want to restrict that, but how do we control the height and the density? And that's the overdevelopment side. Do we want buildings sixty-foot tall here? And it's not up for us to decide whether we want that, it's gonna go to town meeting for the, the town to decide. I just want to prepare this properly, so if our mantra is protect the lake from overdevelopment, how do we do that? Height and density are the first things I think about. To Matt, to your point, is it across the tracks?
Maybe, like, protecting the lake and surrounding currently zoned business areas from overdevelopment? I don't, I don't know how to like, right, package that additional, but protecting the lake and surrounding areas or, or something of that.
Well, if we define a lake district, which is not defined.
That is true.
Then it's within that lake district. We just have to define this.
So would this lake, lake district potentially include uh, residential homes too, or is, would be a lake district that only includes business, industrial, limited business districts?
Well, that's why I brought, I'm not sure, but that's why I brought up the question of how the multi, uh, the mixed-use district in a radius from the North Ave Train Station was, Train Depot was, was created. Because that selects just certain zoning districts within, and properties within.
Yeah, and, and it gives, it gives you more options within that. Again, it's not taking anything away. It's giving the owners a choice to do something. So that's, I think that's a lot, again, a lot different than putting a restriction on someone. So that's where we need to be, we would need to tread lightly here. So, you know, if you're going to have a lake protection district and you truly want to protect the lake, then it would be everything surrounding the lake would fall within this district and everyone equally would, you know, either reap the benefits or get some of the unintended consequences. Meaning you couldn't triple the size of your house. You'd have to keep it a certain size. You need to have a certain much open space. You can't have as much pavement. So again, it's a, it's a tough all encompassing problem that we're trying to deal with here. So.
And Matt, I see where this can grow to even like what chemicals you should not use on your lawn within a certain, in this protect the lake district. And that's something Conservation Commission or the Environmental Sustainability Committee can assist with as well as the town engineer.
Yeah, see, right there you get into a really sticky issue because one of the larger larger entities that is, is doing that is as, you know, you know who that property owner is, so.
Yep. Okay. Well, I think we're making headway on what this is and why don't we run with this? Protecting the lake district from overdevelopment. I'll work on some ideas with what that could be and presented at our next meeting. I actually share with you all before the next meeting so we can discuss it. And Theo will be working with me with the background information I already gathered on what an overlay district could be and what that entails. Does that sound like a good plan moving forward?
Definitely.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and Megan, I will put together those pieces and figure out how to name them and suggest specific names for them. That way we can be very specific in how they could break down to different articles.
That sounds good.
Yep. And Erin, I would just ask, again, just on the action item list, Susan, if you're keeping track of that, that Erin, if you do find out about that space between on the municipal overlay. And I guess the last part of this, as a board, do we want to open this up to some public comments to help us understand a little bit more? At this point, right now? Focus just on what we're talking about. Nothing about other properties that are being developed in front of the ZBA or what we mentioned last night at town council.
Yeah, I mean, why not? People if they want to have any input, so.
Thanks. And Megan, do you feel fine with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Good. I, I just want to make sure and get some consensus before moving forward. So if anybody does have a, a comment or a question, love to hear about it. Brown, Brownwin, your hand is up if you can unmute and.
Yes, hi.
Get your name and address.
Brownwin Delavolby, H Cyrus Street. Thanks for having public input. I appreciate that very much. Just a note that I had wanted to bring up at the, the last meeting, which would have been more appropriate. But when you had, had your discussion about your meeting minutes, I, I, I think the, the more the better. I mean, they don't have to be copious. They don't have to be a novel. But I, I think that the written minutes for a meeting, and I've taken minutes for a lot of committees over the years. The written minutes should probably stand on their own so that someone who doesn't have access or who hasn't seen the video, we get a real solid idea of what happened during the meeting. A little maybe a feel for some of the discussion and how it went and, and of course the votes and things like that. So I think a, a little bit more of a hefty meeting minute is better for transparency sake. And also for, for historic record. So thank you on that. I do agree that cleaning up the, the zoning in that little northeast pocket of the lakeshore is really, it's a very confusing little spot there and, and it's bothering me. I'd really like to see it cleaned up. But I see that kind of as a separate issue from the, the main discussion. But yeah, that's just sort of a muddy area up there and, and maybe that could be like a, a separate by, by law at town meeting perhaps.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. And this is, this is just to make sure I understand what you're, what we just asked Erin to find out more about that little municipal area that's open.
Yes. Yes. That's sort of stuck in with everything else. It just sort of looks out of place. Yes. Again, I really have to emphasize that I, I think that, that the discussion is, is moving forward. But then it has these little, these little fingers and wings that sort of move off. And so I think fine tuning the focus of what you want to achieve on this is the only way to go. And I think that because other entities ha, are looking at safety as well as water quality, that those come, come under a different venue. And I think that they, those two issues, while very important, I think are really muddying the focus and, and I think eventually the progress of the discussion on what you guys are trying to do. So I think if you really, really sort of fine tune it, put the, put those, that little tunnel vision on to protecting the lake from overdevelopment. I think that's really going to help move this, this forward. Again, because other entities are taking care of the safety and the water quality. Could you use the word vistas instead of views? Sort of the same thing, but
Yeah.
you know, preserve vistas. And could you use a, a sort of the, the, the outline or the definition of watershed to help you if you're going with a an overlay district, which I think frankly is the way to go. And my reasoning is this. I understand Megan's point of view and it's, and it is a good point, but when you go to town meeting, it's tough enough to get something like this passed and you want it to be crisp and clean and as easy for people to understand as possible. If you're going sort of, and I'll use the word piecemeal with a little of this, a little of this, a little of this. And say you end up with four or five different bylaw changes. What happens to the overall effect if one or two of them don't, aren't approved to town meeting? I, I really think this needs to be sort of an all or nothing approach. And I think that, that it would have a better chance of, of surviving town meeting if it, if it was that way. I wanted to ask about variances and special permits. How would they affect? Say, say you, we did come up with an overlay district to protect the lake from overdevelopment. What about variances and special permits? Is there any way to prevent those? Because those undermine the bylaw.
It could. It's, um, it's a good question. A variance can always be applied for. So anybody can apply for a, a variance to any of the zoning bylaws and that goes in front of the ZBA, as you know.
Right.
Then that's how the process is supposed to work. Whether it's like I need seven and a half feet from my side property line, how do I, the setback? Can I build within this? So it goes from something simple like that to something very complicated. Like the height of an elevator to, on top of a building and how the, the machine room. And does that count and, and all that? So there's everything in between. The special permits are written into the zoning bylaw to have a specific board approve or not approve a project.
Right.
In, in the case of the, the business district allowing multifamily housing, that would go in front of the ZBA as a special permit. The ZBA cannot issue that special permit or they can listen and make changes with conditions and issue that special permit. So they have full control. Our planning board could also be a board that approves special permits.
Okay, it's just my concern is, as you know, that I think that variances and special permits should be, if not rare, infrequent. And I think we're, we've been experiencing so many that the, the, the intent and the protections provided by our bylaws are, are truly being undermined. And I think we're seeing the results of that. And I would hate for the amount of work that's going into this and it's, it's, it's a marvelous plan, what you're doing here. I, I would hate, I, I just wanted you to give a little bit of thought to see, maybe even Tom Mullen would be able to answer this, to see if there's any way of tightening things up so that it, it couldn't be undermined to undo the intent of, of this wonderful bylaw.
Interrupt. When, when we do have something written, we will be working with Tom Mullen to make sure it is exactly that. Cause all this effort and I'll let you know, Brownwin, this is just the beginning.
I know.
I want our board to be proactive in all shapes and forms with exactly this. I think our board is the right board to orchestrate and facilitate this, to bring in other boards.
Yes.
Work. And I feel our zoning bylaws have a lot of room for us to amend and make changes to and add to. So I'm really excited about that opportunity.
I'm looking forward to that.
Some other people a chance to speak and I do understand your, your value in this too. So just to make sure too, the special permit and the variances, that would be a great. And there's, all I can picture is that very long, and, and I'm not going to bring it up in the bylaws, zoning bylaws of the whys and ends and everything all the way down and SPs in that whole chart for every single type of possible building that could happen in whatever district. If you look down that list, that needs to be updated as well for the different types of buildings that can be constructed. So that's, um, that's a big undertaking, but I.
Huge undertaking, yes.
Yes. Well, that's, that's where hopefully a future master plan, which is not so far in our future will allow us to, to do.
Thank you very much.
Brownwin, I have, I have a question. So you were talking about views or vistas.
Yes.
And I've been trying to get which views or vistas do people want to preserve?
Great question.
I say 360, Matt. I say 360. You're talking about the lake. You're talking about the riparian zone. You're maybe even talking, as I just mentioned previously, about the, the watershed, which may be a guide for you onto how far out to go with, with this discussion. How far away from the lake? So I say 360.
So say someone who lives on Main Street wants to double the size of their house, would that be something that someone else might think would look ugly and therefore it should be included in this? Or do we exclude all residential? So I'm, I'm just trying to get, I'm trying to nail down this, this vista view thing because it, it is kind of, it's, it's kind of all encompassing.
It is, it is. It's a little gnarly, but my feeling is if you're doing, let's just say for the sake of discussion, if you're doing an overlay district, that would be the entire circumference of the lake, right? Not just pieces of the lake.
So we would need to have something written for everything that is visible from the lake. If you have a building or a lot that is visible from the lake, there would be some kind of restriction on that.
I, I would think so with, within your guidelines. I think, you know, when Bill speaks to height and density, those are key. And I agree, height and density. So in other words, if someone wanted to put addition on their houses, there's a reason why they can't as long as it goes within the, the height and, and the density. People are still allowed to, to, to put on an addition or whatever. As long as it doesn't go over the, the 35 foot or whatever you end up, up saying. I think, I don't think that you can pick and choose whose vista you're going to protect. I think it needs to be a 360.
Okay.
To make it, to make it clean and, and fair and easily understood by everybody.
Yeah, it's going to take some work. That's, that's a good question and a good observation. And Matt, I love your questions. That really, sometimes they give me a headache, but they really make me think. And of course, the architect in me is like picturing this view and understanding what it looks like with deciduous trees in the fall versus the spring and, and how that all is made up. It gets complex quickly.
Maybe a, a walking site visit would, would help at some point.
Yeah. At night and during the day.
Yeah.
The night, the light pollution and all that, it's, that's, yeah, this is, I'm really excited. Matt, I don't want to belittle your question, but is there something you were thinking about with how that view or vista should be named specifically or include or exclude certain parts?
Well, let me tell you the problem I have with. We're trying to limit the height in the view that we see from the lake. And I think a lot of people are looking for Main Street up towards Redding area. Unfortunately, our view that way has already been basically.
Yeah.
I'm not going to say ruined. Some people might like it, but it's been, it's been altered. It's completely out of our, out of our control. So we're trying to limit the height of a building that's going to go in front of something we don't want. You know, maybe we want to put a taller building up that's all black. So we don't see Jordan's furniture. I don't know, but you know, I'm, I'm having trouble buying into, we're going to limit what we do in Wakefield to a certain height, but we can still see that massive monstrosity across the lake. And there's not much we can do about it. So that's where I'm having, you know, everyone keeps saying we want to preserve the view of the lake. And, but I don't know which views people want to preserve that, that, and that's genuinely, that's where I'm coming from is I don't. Truthfully, the, at the head of the lake, can you look down towards downtown? That looks nice. So does that mean you don't want to have any more, you know, any more church steeples going up? Do you not, you know, no tall buildings that you can potentially see? No more lights shining brightly down there? I don't know. And that's why I'm, I'm generally asking this because I really, I, I'm trying to figure out where, where we want to get to. Once we know where we want to get to, I, I wanted to help, definitely help getting there. So.
I feel like it's going to, um, it could kill what we're, what we're, what we'll spend time and plan on. It could be something that takes three hours of town meeting that comes up because of the word view or vista. And Matt, to your point about looking from north to south, it's like, I still expect to see the Baptist church steeple. And I know you sat in the parking lot of Town Hall and watched it burn with me during a planning board meeting. So I mean, that's so difficult, but what does change? How does, to your point earlier, we don't want to restrict. We want to enhance. We want to allow growth and development, but we don't. We want it to happen in a certain way. And, and, and does it mean that it's like any, you know, I don't want to push it to another board, but is it something like we did with the street trees? So back four or five years ago, we looked at all the trees at Mount Holyoke Cemetery and in different places. And we came up with this list and had Dennis, Dennis Fazio come into the meeting as a tree expert and explain more to us. So maybe that's something we need to do. Maybe we have someone who understands more about the views and the history and everything. Come and speak at one of our meetings to explain the same way. I want to have a lighting expert come in like they did to the Conservation Commission and talk to us about light pollution and everything. So we understand more. I want to set those up for future meetings so we could learn more about what it is. And maybe that will help us frame these views or 360 and word it properly. So it, it's very specific about what it's restricting and what it's not.
Okay, because, you know, we could get into an issue where we pass a zoning change for height and then. pass a zoning change for height and then suddenly now, and, and, and I understand Bronwyn wants to put limits on variances and special permits and everything, but say, just for instance, we, we put a height limit on something and they want to build a new church. Now suddenly they want to put a tall steeple in, but the height's been limited and also the ability to go for a special permit or variance has been limited also. Therefore, you can't put that church steeple up. You know, this is potentially what could happen. So.
And I like how you're thinking about this. And not that I could, I have to learn how to do a really good Tom Mullen voice because I think that would help. But I could hear him saying, you cannot write anything into these articles that will limit or keep somebody from doing a variance.
Exactly. I, I, and I know that. So.
Okay. Yeah.
And for churches, you get the Dover Amendment and you have all kinds of things that obviously,
Yep.
Again, we're starting to get further away from.
We are, but it's
From the lake, so.
Because it is, it is a big picture right now and we do want to focus. And the best thing I like, the, the Brown one mentioned is how do we focus on just protect, how do we fine tune it? And I think that's our goal over the next two meetings is how do we fine tune this? How do we form a thesis and fine tune it? And I think that's going to be with Theo going back and doing some research and us having a discussion and trying to figure out like, how do we get these pieces together? I think that's our goal for the next meeting or two is to fine tune this and figure out who we want to come in as experts to help us understand more. A, as well as the town. Hands up. Joanne, hi. You have your hand up. Sorry if I missed you and you're just hanging out there, but please unmute and speak and state your address.
Joanne Schooler, fifty-one A Chestnut Street. I just put my hand up.
Okay. I feel better. Thanks.
Yeah. So it sounds to me like you are kind of focusing in a little bit better on the goal of preserving the lake and protecting it from overdevelopment. That's, I, I think I'm hearing that. And to me, what that means is not letting it get more built up than it already is. So bringing in this thing about the Jordan's Furniture, that's in Reading. I mean, we really don't control that. So I don't really think it's that relevant. And to say, well, you know, we have that big thing there. So it doesn't really matter if we put something else big in front of it because that's already a done deal and we don't control that. We don't control that, but we do control what's in Wakefield. And to me, what I'd like to see is, you, you know, you talk about the thirty-five feet dimension, the height and the density. And I think the height and the density and the distance are all key to protecting the lake from overdevelopment. But I don't think the neighborhood district, when I read the description of the neighborhood district, it doesn't sound like you want to be replacing some of the districts with neighborhood district.
I'm sorry, just interrupt you quickly. So we would be replacing or rezoning business district to neighborhood business.
All right. Well, I think the reason, what I'm hearing is the reason you want to do that is because of the thirty-five foot limitation.
Correct.
But the rest of the description of the neighborhood business district, it didn't seem to make a lot of sense to me to reuse the wording, the description of the neighborhood business district.
Okay.
So if you want to keep the thirty-five foot dimension, okay. But the other option is, you know, some of those buildings that are up there right now, like in Lakeside Office Park, they're not even thirty-five feet.
Right.
So I wonder if there's some way to make some sort of stipulation where they can't build any bigger or on a bigger footprint than what they are today. Cause that to me is what preserve means is it's kind of like, you know, don't let it get any more overdeveloped than it already is, but maybe we accept what we've already got as a little bit of a standard.
Right. And, and these are good points. And I, I, I want to say we're probably about two meetings away from all that wording. And really taking a look and taking pieces of the wording to make sure we phrase it the way we want it to be to protect the lake. Right? So that's just, I don't want to oversimplify it, but I think once we look at the words, it's going to be very complex with all the different pieces we have. And then once we start to bring that tighter into a focus on what we want, I, I still think and, and that's where we need to have a discussion with Tom Mullen to make sure that it's, it's in the right place. But I, I do appreciate the whole, you know, let's look closer at the wording in neighborhood business and if it's not what we want, maybe that's not the right direction to go. And I'm not sure about the footprint. Where, you know, building in the same footprint, honestly, if something happens with the office park at the lake. I, I, I would rather not see it in that same footprint. Honestly, there's, there's all, not, not to bring up views again, but there's a way to create beautiful views from the lake across and different channels where they could be pedestrian streets that could really beautify that part that it's not now.
Right.
Or just pavement for cars to go in and out of. That's all.
I, I'm just thinking that as a maximum in terms of the density and the height, what you have now, I mean, yeah, you'd want it to be, you want to create more open space, it sounds like particularly with that area. But you don't want it to get any more overdeveloped than it already is.
Yep. And there could be something in the wording. Again, once we get there, it's like maintain the current density. Don't go beyond the, the existing density. Maybe there's something about that. And that would be looking into possibly the FAR, the floor area ratio. That could help us with that.
That's a good question. It also seems like we really, when we're talking about overdevelopment, we mean over concentration of one particular use, like. You know, we, we don't want a bunch of, you know, smokestacking industry or we'd, we'd almost hate for Lakeside Park to become like even four-story dense residential, right? So it, it might be, you know, talking about overdevelopment, it really is about balancing some uses.
That's a good point, Theo. It would be right. You know, what, what is the the use replacing Lakeside Park? If it did happen, right? So in the future, if, if that, we wouldn't want it to be replaced completely with multifamily residence. Does it give, does it, something in that it has to be replaced with business? Meaning for the economic development as well. So I, yeah, this is, that goes down another whole avenue, which I, I'm sure it's going to come up. Okay.
I think Lakeside Office Park is probably the most relevant opportunity to, to protect it. We still have an opportunity to protect Lakeside Office Park. And I think that's an opportunity that may not last for that long. You know what I mean?
Possibly. I think I'd have to look back at my meeting notes, but that was also part of the subdivision plan that went through our board and is locked in. So we, yeah, we'd have to look at, but again, looking towards a master plan. And I definitely see that in there. Don't see any other hands up, but this is, this has been a really good discussion. I feel like we made a lot of progress this evening and we're getting closer. Unless there's any other board members that have any comments, I'd like to move on to the next item on the agenda.
So what's the next steps on this? We're going to have a discuss this at our next meeting and, and what's?
There was, Theo is looking at the complications or how an overlay district would work. I'm going to feed him the research and stuff that I have to save some time. I am going to wordsmith and look at how that let me share it again, so I don't misread it. Protecting the lake district from overdevelopment, like what does that mean? So I am going to come up with some bullet points and some wording on what exactly that means. And I'll be sharing it with the board before the next meeting. That way we can have a good discussion. We can all be prepared. Aaron is going to look at, oh, sorry. I'm also going to look at those different zones or districts that we're talking about around the lake and coming up with a name or something for them that defines them. Aaron's going to look at the municipality, the municipal overlay district and why there's a, there's a piece missing at the top of the lake. So far, those are the action items unless I missed one. Okay. Matt, is there anything you'd like to do or just good for now?
If you, you know, if you want to try to put some map together, I could probably work on that. So.
I don't think we're ready yet for that.
Okay.
You have to wait to hear from Theo about if we do go forward with an overlay district, like what that would be. And then I think, yeah, your time would be really valuable with how that could be.
Yeah, but I, I, I think us trying to digest and clarify exactly where our goals are of protecting the lake. And we, everyone keeps saying protecting the lake, but zoning ways wise to doing that in the extent of that, we need to kind of clarify before we can really move forward. So.
Right.
That's, that's the big thing. And, you know, I know we keep getting hung up with height and density and things, but you know, I threw out the height thing there because if, if you're going on height, that that does cut down on some density. It doesn't really preserve any open space. It doesn't really do too much to protect the lake. So. Right. You know, I, I'm just want to be clear on that, that I don't see how that is a right now is going to do much to protect the lake. So in the, in the very limited zones that this is going to apply to.
Okay. You know, let's see where this goes. And, and Matt, you just made, well, I'm, I'm thinking of something else as you were talking about that of like, what's that next milestone? I feel like not the next meeting, but the meeting after that, we need to have something formulated where we can present to Tom Mullen and get that process going to create, to advertise a public hearing. So we can open it up and really get the wording and everything going. And, and then because now we're hitting the end of June, July into August, and we need to be prepared in August for what this article is.
Yeah, well, we kind of need to have it, we need to have it written.
Yep.
Before we really go to post it.
Yep.
So people know exactly what they're commenting on and then then we'll hopefully revise it from there. So there is a lot of work to do to get this on the fall town meeting.
Yep. And I, I I understand the urgency and I want our next meeting to bring all that wording together. And then between that meeting and our first June meeting, we need to get it to Tom Mullen for review and discussion and his advice.
So do we roughly know when town meeting, fall town meeting would be?
Because I know, but I'm thinking if it falls into play, it's usually that first week in October, I thought, I mean, I'm maybe skewed because of last year.
Our date hasn't been said yet, so.
Yeah, but I, I'm just thinking we need to start working the math back because we need to have it written. We need public hearing, it needs to be submitted to town council. When you back all that out, and then if we have, you know, summer, if, you know, I don't know what we're going to do for a summer schedule, but normally we have a couple fewer meetings, then suddenly this time crunch comes upon us really fast. So that's why I'm just bringing this up.
Yeah, and I, I would, I would consider it a failure if we don't get this in for fall. And I can't see it waiting to spring. I, I think that would be a failure on our board's part. So let's make it happen. I'll prepare a timeline, Matt, and work with Aaron to see what we have for going backwards from a town meeting date.
Okay.
What that, those spaces in between, like for advertising and everything will take. Sorry, Aaron, I just volunteered you to help me with that.
No worries.
I'm not really sorry.
Well, we can sort of back out from the, the Friends of the Lake zoning article that was supposed to be on the fall. So we knew what the time constraints were there. So we need to, to just basically take that timeframe.
Yep.
Put it into a, basically a potential date and then add another month or two to, you know, at least another month and a half to it for our due diligence.
Right.
Once we get something written. So, you know, when you, when you put all that together, we have like a month to, to really or two meetings, yes, to formulate a path forward here.
Yeah, I'd love three meetings, meaning if, if we're talking about the same thing, I'd love three public hearings. Minimum to, to make this work. I know it's not required, but I think that, that would be super helpful in this case. Especially if we want to bring in some experts from outside, like for lighting and light pollution and other specifics. All right. Got it, Matt. That's a really good suggestion. Thanks again for making me think. Helping us out here. All right. That's town planning. Let go back up, planning board. Here we go. Action items. Board elections. So Matt and I were chatting and, and I, I think it's good to think about what is the normal board procedure for elections? We usually have our elections following town elections, which obviously just happened. We, as a board, in the past two, two and a half years, as most of you know, we were working as a three-person board for a while. That changed last summer and we were able to gain two new members, Megan and Joanne, and that was super helpful. And we're able to have elections. So it's that time of year again. So with Theo being his first meeting, is this something that I suggest that we table to the next meeting as an action item? Or do we want to do board elections this evening? Matt, I'm looking for your input as vice.
Well, and the reason why I brought this up is we've, we've gone, I think you're going to be going into your fifth year as, as chairman. And
Yep.
And historically, we've always changed every year just to keep things rotating, sort of like the town council does. And the reason we do that is just to keep, you know, to keep getting new, to get a new perspective on things by having a different person there each time. You've done a great job to this whole pandemic and this whole transition with the town planner leaving and, and Aaron coming in. So I just, but I just think we need to keep up our, whether, you know, it's the same people elected, we just need to follow, you know, you need to have that. So that's why I, I propose that we should be doing this. So.
Agreed. And you know, if Agreed, and you know, if you and Bill didn't decline three years in a row. To be chair.
Yeah, and then, then we, we had the issue with, we were perennial short and.
Yep.
You know, let's wait till we get a full board and that just.
Keep pushing.
It happened momentarily, it seemed like, then, and then we're back down again, so.
Okay, I'm, yeah, let's, um, I'm fine with doing it this evening and. I do not mind. Being nominated as chair again, but I would like to see another board member possibly be nominated as chair. And Matt, I'd like to nominate you as chair, if anyone wants a second.
I'll second that nomination.
Thank you, Megan. Any other nominations for chair?
Are you nominated as the incumbent or?
I have to be nominated.
Okay, alright.
Now, what we do is we elect the chair and then the vice chair and then. The chair will appoint the. Secretary and the bill payer.
Right. Which we haven't been doing through this for a year now either. And just to, to clarify Matt's point about the bill payer and the. What, what's the right word, the secretary?
That's, that is the term that we have used. I don't know if it's the, the proper term.
Right.
I was thinking.
With the clerk. Clerk is separate, so the secretary would be the duties of the secretary, any paperwork that comes in that needs to be signed. That is put together and signed by all board members, for example, our clerk for her. Pay invoice that is usually signed by all board members. During this time of the pandemic, I've been signing that electronically and sending it back to the town. Usually that comes up at each board meeting, we would have those forms to sign. And previously, Bill Di Amore had that position. So right now, we do not have a secretary. Was that well described, Matt?
Uh, well, no, that, that was a bill payer. Bill, Bill was a bill payer.
Thank you.
And secretary, I, I think for a few times it was Paul Semenza. I know, so, and, and I think we should, you know, I'm, I'm thinking we should. Get away from the term secretary and maybe have technical writer or, or technical wordsmith or something like that, so. I just.
Writer, yeah, that's, we can make this up too and we could, we could, we don't have to decide on it this evening. But there are, so there's a chair, there's a vice chair, the bill payer, and then there is a, a writer.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So those are the four positions. I've nominated Matt, it's been second for chair. Any other nominations out there for chair?
So just to point a clear, the, these are annual terms.
They are, okay, and just to be clear too, the vice chair doesn't become the chair, like in some other boards, it's nominated and voted on each year.
Bill, do you have any? Preference in. Feeling like you've got a good handle on things and it's worth staying as chair for one more year or?
If you asked me this last year at this time, I would say, no, I don't have a good handle on any of this. But. I have become more comfortable and I've received a lot of feedback from people. That have watched the videos to help make these meetings move along and be better facilitated. So yes, I feel like I'm in a good position to continue on as chair. But I do feel to Matt's point that it would be good to have a new face as well.
Okay.
Not, not that I would be a new face, but.
That's right.
Just want to point that out, so.
You were the chair when I joined the board.
Yes.
I, I, I see, I, well, AIC merit in, in both of you, so, but if, if. You know, it's not like you're going anywhere, so, so I will. Think I will decline. I think, I think I'm good for.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so with no other nominations as chair, congratulations, Matt.
Well, we need to take a vote, it's not.
Okay, have you, are you declining? That would be.
I'm not declining, but I have. No, I'm not declining, but it needs to be voted on too.
Roll call vote. I vote yes, Matt Lowry.
Yes.
Do you have no?
Yes.
Megan Menasali.
Yes.
Okay, only because it's in order. Congratulations, Matt, for the. Being elected for one-year term as chair of the planning board.
Alright, I'm sure I'll be thrilled, so at some point, so. Like I said, it's, it's.
Sorry, I'm laughing. Your enthusiasm is really great.
Well, the, just so you know, this is the first time I've voted for myself to be chair. Usually I always. To, I always vote no, so I have some plausible deniability if something goes wrong, but this time I. I chose not to do that, so.
Thank you, Matt.
But, yeah. You know, old dogs do change, so.
Right, and we'll, we'll talk to Aaron and Sherry Dalton, who sets up these meetings and sends the emails out. And sets up the town planner, I'm sorry, the. Planning board chair email that from the website goes directly to town email. That needs to be checked.
So I'll nominate Bill Spalding as vice chair. Any? Any discussions on anyone, any other nominations?
I'd, I'd like to nominate Megan Menasali as vice chair.
I'll second that too.
Alright.
Can I decline my nomination?
Definitely decline. There's no reason. There's nothing in the rules that says you can't.
I would like to decline my nominee.
Okay.
Okay. But thank you.
Alright.
Well, I guess I'm, since I'm the chair now, let's take a roll call vote on Bill Spalding as being vice chair. Theo?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Myself, yes, and Bill?
No, I'm just kidding, yes. I've learned a lot from you, Matt.
Well. Plausible deniability, it's a good thing, so.
Right.
Alright, I'm going to. I'm gonna appoint Megan as the. Formerly known as secretary, and I think it's going to be, we're going to call. Technical writer, correspondence person, so. And. Theo, I'm going to have you as bill payer, so you can get used to that, so. And we'll work out the details as we, as we go along, so.
Matt, I'd like to. Write a description of these. Just to help with understanding what each, and I, I know we don't really have anything written. But part of what I've done for onboarding and a checklist for some new members, I have it just drafted. Part of that would be is what each description is, like what is the chair responsible for? What is the vice chair? What is the bill payer? And what is the writer? Like, what are their responsibilities? What I'll do is I'll draft that up and, and send it out to you, Matt, for you to look at, and then we can share it with the other board members.
Okay.
A good idea?
That sounds good.
Okay.
And, and just for consistency, I'm gonna yield back the rest of the meeting to you, Bill, as. So you can finish up this meeting, just to make it a little more consistent, so.
Okay, thank you. Susan, are you still there? Did you get all that? Is there anything that we need to review? You good?
I think I got it.
Alright, thank you, okay. Next item on tonight's agenda, items not anticipated by a chair. First, I want to mention the Vision 2030 and how important that has been and what it's grown into. It, it's really becoming a movement and I would challenge each board member to please visit the 2030 site and. Share that with as many people in the time that you know, the more input, the better. I feel that's going to really help and. As we. Hopefully work towards a master plan as our board, it would, it would be wonderful to have all that. Survey information and documentation to help us understand more about future master plan. Second item I have is, we've received many emails in the last week or two. To the planning board chair email, so that's on our town website and our town website has a lot of information on it. If you're not familiar with the Wakefield. Planning board site, that email goes directly to the chair, which is me right now, and of course, it's going to be changed to Matt. That will, we've received many. Solicit, solicitations from, is this land being sold, is what's going on with this property? To comments about, why don't we have a top, full-time town planner? To what about this 40B? How come we can't talk during public hearings, public town meetings for the planning board? So a lot has been in there, so what I do with that is I read through them, I share them with the board if it seems like it needs board input. But I, I usually send those directly to Aaron Kokinda or to Tom Mullen, to Susan All, to whoever it needs to go to. So they're more forwarded emails. I'm not sure how we should approach this in the future, but I think as a board, we should figure out how that is handled. For example, on some days, I spend one to two hours responding to those emails. And making sure I'm kept up. I check those emails in the morning and then usually around lunchtime and maybe at the end of the day. And if there are emails in there that need to be responded to, like, thank you for your message, this is not something our board has any. Saying, I am forwarding you to Gail Khan, so the ZBA, whatever it might be. Or the Conservation Commission, so that's something I've been doing to, to keep that going. There's a lot of activity. So I was curious what the board thought about what we could do. With that. This. Specific form of communication to our board.
Well, I. I was surprised when we, and I found out, I don't even know when it was, that we had a. A planning board email and it all went to the town planner, so we really didn't even know that. There was.
Any of it.
Yeah, any of this was going on.
Understood.
So.
Matt, I was really surprised when I started looking at them and there was like 4,000 emails in there. When I. Got it last year, so yes.
So. Maybe, you know, it, it's hard for. An individual to communicate with a board because we're, we're, and you know, we're an entire entity, we're not. An individual person, so maybe we need to. Redo that and maybe say, responding to this link sends a, any, a, a general email to all board members. This is, you know, should only be related to board issues. Any other issues, maybe direct them to. Someone else, I don't know, so.
Right. Like this person. No, but this, this page, I shouldn't say person, but you can see how this is laid out where. Right, so I, Matt, just to back up what you're saying, this is contact the planning board chair at planning board, so this is. When you click on this, it directly, I shouldn't have clicked on that, it's going to start Outlook running, so that goes directly to. The email feed, which is. Through Outlook, through the town, and all those emails, I don't delete any of them, I keep them in there, so all the correspondents are. Are in there. I don't know, Matt, this is. It's something I look forward to because there is a lot of good information in there, and then it's something I don't look forward to. Because of the amount of time it takes, so I, I think there's a time management. A possibility to help control the time management somehow.
Well. I, I'm kind of a fan on what, and I haven't really done this, what do other boards have? Do, if we look at other towns, do they have a direct link to the planning board or do they go through an individual? And then they're a liaison to the board, so. I guess, you know, I'm going to start. Visiting other planning board websites and specifically look to see if they have a. Contact all or contact a person. And see how they're laid out, and maybe we should emulate what is done in other towns, so.
Do you mind if I chime in?
Please do.
I think there is some language like send your A and R plans and all that to me. I think we need to make it like my contact and Susan's as well, like to send it that way too. Because I think you've done a really good job, Bill, of like seeing me whenever you get anything. I just think it needs to be more clear, which is a bigger thing we have to figure out, but I think our name should be there as well.
That's a good point. I think my biggest fear is that people are writing messages to our board and they're not being listened to or responded to. That, I think that is a failure on our board's part, so if anybody from the town sends a letter of citizen. Or, I'm sorry, towns person, they would. I would expect them to have, get a response. And if, if that's something we start to write, that if. To, to Matt's point, like how, what, how, if we set up expectations. I think that's going to help it be successful.
Well, I also think you have to put what, what we do, because I think sometimes.
Yeah.
That gets kind of confusing as well, right?
Yeah, let me go back to, for example, if we go to here, you can see, and Aaron, this is. Thank you so much for doing this, like the, so the vision of land and information, so it goes right to here. And the procedure is ready, so this explains more of what we do, and it has the forms up here, which I think that's a, a big help. You're seeing that, correct? Okay, good. And then it gets to, if we go to this, and then it, it really dives into everything that was the town planner site.
Is this something that maybe we just. Rotate through, I mean, that way, one person isn't getting burnt out by it. And I think we can expect a pretty steady slate of. High volume of traffic that's going to happen over the next two years, right?
So, yeah, it's, I want to say it's probably between 10 and 15 messages between Monday and Friday. That's, that's the average, some weeks a little bit more, some weeks a lot less.
So my quick search of four different planning board in other towns. And they either have. No, you know, no context, they just say who the planning board is. And, and most of them are directed to the town planner or economic development or something like that, so. I don't see any of these where you're actually corresponding. Exactly to the board, so. So we may want to just rethink that whole thing and. Or like I said, if we, if someone wants to correspond, send an email to. All the board members, they'd send it to that and we put on there, you know. This will be sent to the, to the planning board members, you know. You may, may not get a response, so don't ask a specific question like. Are you having a meeting tonight and expect that we're going to respond to you, so, but I don't, we. I'm also, you know, I, I deal with a lot of towns too and I end up. Trying to communicate with. What I think is. An entity in a town and come to find out three weeks later that. What I've submitted requests to don't go through because no one's looking at it, so. what I've submitted requests to, don't go through because no one's looking at it. So I, I also don't like to have a link to something and not necessarily going to get a response. So I applaud you, Bill, for responding to, to these, but maybe we need to direct people's specific questions where they need to go. So.
I agree. And I, I like a point that you made or a suggestion you made where what if when you do send it, it sends to all Planning Board members? And then as a Planning Board, we decide to Theo's point, whose turn is it maybe to respond? And I don't know if that's the best or is it because most of it is forwarding it to other people because responding and saying, you know, we, we don't have this, this is not something we control, but connecting them with somebody who does know or does have the control to answer.
Yeah, and it, it, it could be that you have a semi-automated response. So certain certain questions, you would respond back. Thank you. We've directed your, your inquiry to this department or this person. And you need to follow up with, you know, whomever.
Right.
Town manager, whatever. So I think that might be a better way, a little more responsive that at least we are responding if we want to do it that way. So again, if you start looking at other towns and see how they have it set up, I think that I, I think other towns have realized the issues with, with this. So, and, and there are some issues that we don't really necessarily want to be included on some, some details if it's going to come before us at some point.
True.
So, you know.
Respecting open meeting laws as well. That's a, that's, that's, yep.
Yeah. If some developer says, I want to buy up half the town and rezone it, can you help me do that? Obviously.
Or to Erin.
We would not want to get involved with that. So.
Nope.
That definitely something that Erin would want to handle. So.
Thanks, guys.
So I, I also want to make the point that if other towns, we do not have a full-time town planner. We just don't. So.
I'm trying my best.
No, no knock on you at all, Erin. It's not at all. I think you're doing a wonderful job as, as you know, how I feel. Economic development, community development side. This is, this town planner, if we had a town planner, I could see this email going to that town planner and then the town planner deciding on who or where it should go. Or to, to forward it to the board for future discussion, but we don't. So in the time being, Matt, as Vice Chair, I don't mind responding to these, to continue to respond. I, I do have a system down. It, it does work. Okay. Unless you want to take, take it on in a similar capacity until we do have a solution.
No, I guess that would be fine. I guess just knowing what the volume is, I'd be interested just to see and maybe you know, if it's going to be too much volume, we, remember, we're volunteer positions. We shouldn't be spending, you know, too much time on things that
Right.
are a municipal function that someone else necessarily may, should be doing. So.
Understood. And I think we revisit that. Let's, um, let's let this one slide and I don't mind picking up and copying you, Matt, as the chair on so it's only two members of the board. So we're still not, we're not violating open meeting laws as far as I understand. With a four-member board. What are the numbers on that, Matt?
I think you might have to look into that.
Yeah, because with five members, it's no more than two. With four members, would it be no more than one?
Yeah, yeah.
That's an interesting thought. Well, I don't think we're going to solve it this evening, but Matt, maybe you and I, we can't. No, we could talk, talk separately to figure this out.
Yep.
And with Erin's guidance. Yep. Or is it, they all just go to Susan?
I like the idea of maybe giving some proactive advice in regards to maybe making like a table or something on the page of explaining, right, this concern goes to this email address, right, and giving some suggestions and proactive help to people. And then, you know, and default is the, the current email that we have, right, for, for all other. But yeah, happy to continue the conversation in a later time, but I, I like that idea of proactive support for the town.
Okay. I do have two more points that were not anticipated. Last night's town council meeting. I think about an hour 12 into the meeting, I wrote it in a different notebook that I don't have in front of me. The property on North Ave that was subdivided by our board, through our board a year ago, end of 2019, beginning of 2020, it also went as a zoning bylaw change to change from, the proposal was to change it to, from single to general, so they can have three units. Each unit would have three separate buildings, houses. Each house would have two units. So think duplex, duplex, duplex in that area. The rest of the area where it's wetlands was going to be either given back to the, I have to look specifically. I know. So if you go to the town council meeting, I think it's one hour 12 into it, the video's not up yet. It could be. I, I checked at noon. It wasn't. But you'll hear the presentation of a 40B, a 38-unit 40B going in that. That original proposal for the zoning bylaw change was defeated at town meeting back in June of 2020. What's most interesting is if you go through it and we don't have to get into it this evening, but it's the comments from town council that came after. It was, it's really good to listen to. So obviously that wasn't anticipated on our agenda. The other item is the ZBA. If you go back to last week's meeting, they did hear the 200 Quanapower Parkway project and they went through the whole presentation. It was, it's definitely worth reviewing. And I think that's next up. It's not tomorrow, but it's a week from tomorrow is the next hearing on that, I believe. I can't, I didn't confirm that. Sorry.
No, it's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow.
Yep, at seven.
Okay, thank you.
I, I was a little disappointed that they did not taken into consideration any of the other boards that were asked to put input in on that. So. I, I was.
So sorry to interrupt. Do you think that was just a timing thing where they just wanted to have that presentation and they're waiting for when they start to deliver input?
I, I don't know what, what that was, but I mean, other most other job, other projects, when they start off and they, you know, it's a statutory thing where you need to require, you know, put it out to other boards and, and departments for input. You would think that that would be noted at, at the time, but that wasn't. So.
Right. Which brings up the comments that we received. Thank you, Susan and Erin for distributing. There's, there's one interesting that came in that I'm not sure of and I don't think we really have any jurisdiction in it, but this was on 109 Farm Street. So 109 Farm Street. There, it's the application for a special, special permit to construct an addition onto the existing dwelling was submitted to the Board of Appeals. What I'm confused about is I believe our town building inspector was giving the power to approve this specific type of special permit without it going to the ZBA. For example, there's a, it's an existing non-conforming lot. This existing non-conforming lot, they're putting a small addition on the back that is going to stay within the same non-conforming setback. But for some reason, this specific, this specific project is going in front of the ZBA for a special permit, which as you know, with the current agenda items is being pushed really far behind. And it's something that I believe the building inspector has the power to just approve. So that's the only thing I noticed out of the items that came to us. And I was wondering if anybody had any comments on that as well. I, I, I don't think as a board, we have anything to say about this, but I found that strange that this application for a special permit wasn't handled by the building inspector instead of it going through the ZBA.
Well, it's, it's increasing a non, it's increasing a non-conformity. So that's why it's going to the ZBA, right? If it if it extended a non-conformity and didn't make it any worse, then I think the building inspector could act on it. That's what I believe.
And, and maybe that's where I'm confused because it seems to, the proposed addition is squaring off the house and holding that same line of the existing house.
Yeah, but it's getting closer to the lot line.
Right. It's going from 11.5 to 8.5.
Yeah. If, if, if that addition stayed at 11.5,
Okay.
Then it wouldn't, you know, it'd be extending a non-conformity. It wouldn't be.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, this is definitely a non-conforming lot. If, if you, if I do hold up the plan and it comes through, you can see the zig and the zagging, and then there's a whole easement going through the whole lot. Okay. That makes more sense, Matt. Sense, Matt. Thanks for clarifying.
It, it should be a procedural thing. I would think they would not hearing any, you know, opposition from the neighbors. I think they should be able to get this through pretty quickly unless they wanted more clarification on.
Right.
On something. And for the most part, we usually don't comment on residential projects. So there is one that, that stood out a little bit to me, the one that has a very large house. And it seemed to not planned properly for a pool in the backyard and I want to put inside yard, but so. But you know, I don't think, I don't want to submit any comments on that.
Right. That's, that's another question I had too. It's like, we don't usually comment on these, but this was something, it seemed bigger where it's like a non-conforming lot that now has the building inspector has power to approve it.
Yeah, well, might bring up this other one is it's, this is a, a house that was just constructed and they, they created a hardship for themselves by making a house that is massive. So, you know, so now they're looking for relief, which is a little odd in my, you know, in my book, you know. You should have perhaps planned properly if you're going to do something like that.
Understood. All right. That's what I have for items not anticipated. Does anybody else have any items they want to share?
Yeah, I yeah, I, I just wanted, I, I think one of the things that we can add to the website really would be some way of tracking and just keeping a, a list either through the minutes or on the website of the developments that are proposed and underway because that, that seems that's part of a, I think, a public perception problem of too much development or we don't know where things are, are going and and people feel overwhelmed. And the, maybe the role of the meeting minutes really are to keep that tally. Just because that sort of helps with sort of public memory about where things are at. I know I found it really difficult to try to trace back some of the history of, of decisions.
This is a, this is a really good topic and this actually came in one of the messages to the Chair email. And to prepare that, it, it seems like it would be one page that the ZBA would link to, the ConCom would link to, the Planning Board would link to. So it would be a master list of current projects. It wouldn't just be, oh, go to the Planning Board page for the what's there. It could be just a link of to current projects. Is, is that what you were referring to? So for example, you would get to see 200 Quanapower Parkway. And you would see what's happening at Tarrant Lane. You would see what's happening with the Chestnut project and the water and Wakefield project. So all of these right down the line. Is that what you were thinking, Theo?
Yeah, that, that, that was definitely it. I, it, it seems like a pretty big housekeeping. It potentially could be a, a pretty big housekeeping activity. So I'm I think maybe just starting small and, you know, enlisting things so that that's at least a little bit more helpful. But.
Are you, are you talking about projects that's under our jurisdiction or, or projects townwide?
Yeah, to be honest, I, I was starting, it was more projects townwide, but I, yeah, that's I think you're right. That's, that's perhaps not a strategic thing to do.
Yeah. So we have, well, we do, when we have larger subdivisions going on, one of our requirements is that we get everything in PDF and we post that on there. So if, if we've received something other than like an A and R plan, something that statutorily we need to act on and people can see that the registry in short, short term, but if there's something that we're discussing, people can actually pull up the plans and look at them as beforehand and as we're discussing it. I've been pushing for this for years. We finally do have it for the Planning Board. I would love to see this for the ZBA that everything they have is posted. So people there's some transparency there. People can see what they're talking about. And that, you know, that's unfortunately out of our hands as, as a planning board, just to have the ZBA do something. But you know, it would be great if they had something where every job is posted on there. So you could see where it was and you could look at the meeting minutes and, and look at the you know, go to the video and then look at the plans all at the same time and be able to, to go through this. So there's not much, I think that we can do about that. So.
Sorry. I think that's something we're trying to work on at the town level, just be more transparent of what's going on. So I think it's all valid points. And I think, like you said, Matt, we've done a better job, but we are still trying to build on that. So. Yeah.
Okay.
And Matt, I pulled up an example of what the ZBA has now where on the left side, you can see the 200 to 400 Quanapower Parkway and the whole list of plans as well as Tarrant Lane. And that, in that case, it brings you to a whole separate homepage. Right. That's, it, I agree, Matt, it is getting better and I love that we have our projects for review. Obviously not at this time, but it could be projects for review and it could be a list of you know, what the board's working on. And it could be more of a description as well, just to help again, to clarify, to be more transparent.
Yeah. And, and I, I look at the, the town website as a place to put documents to be transparent. So people can go look at them and make their own conclusions on, on what's there. One thing I, one thing I don't care, care about, the one you're pointing to right now is the, the link at the, the bottom link there. That is almost a sales pitch. Not that one, the one just above that. That is almost a sales pitch for the project. So don't click on it because you're Uh don't click on it, cuz you're. I I see that this should be a place to get the raw information for you to then. Make your own decisions.
Agreed.
So, and uh that has not happened. Is not happening, and I think it really should, especially during pandemic when it's almost impossible to go review plans. So, but that that's a. A management issue that needs to be dealt with, so. It's out of our hands.
Okay, but Matt, just you bringing it up, um in in past meetings, bringing up ideas and stuff too. I think um in the past year, especially with Erin's help, working with Jen McDonald and the town. It's it's really improved to what we what we have in the site and how it's, how we, how much easier it is to navigate.
Yeah, and 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 part of the process, I don't, I know people don't particularly care for it, it's just. Hammering home the same thing each time, you you've gotta just keep at it and say, why don't we have this? There are other projects in town where I I'm looking to see. These submitted documents and you cannot find them, and it's it's very frustrating, so. They're dish, you know. We we had the opportunity in Wakefield to be a model of of transparency by putting all the documents out there and letting people. Make up their own mind, look at them and see if it if it's good or bad and then be able to. Ask thoughtful questions instead of. You know, repeating the same question because they not necessarily was at the last meeting and so.
Right. Okay. Right, we're getting there.
And uh one more thing, I know um you. Bill, thank you for the link where you pointed to the the previous town council meeting where. Tom Mullen addressed why. Certain things are not discussed and not up for discussion because. Yeah, in in this case, it was this project at the head of the lake, because it's not before our board. So, you know, us opening up discussions on something that we have no say in, it really. Does not. Help too much with the whole process, it's better if these questions are addressed with. The the entity that is responsible for that, so, and if people don't like it, you you need to. Just keep questioning things and bring up, you know. So, that's.
The system works, and I have learned a lot over the last, you know, especially working with you, Matt, on the board and understanding more and with. A former town planner to really understand, because you can't read online about how to be a. How the planning board is really supposed to run, and it's different in each town too. I've been in attendance at two Merrows Planning Board meetings now. And they don't respond to any of the comments from the public when they're brought up, they don't respond at all, they just take notes. And they responded to a month later. And I just, it, it's it's just a different way that a board's run, but I do appreciate you bringing that up and um. I know two of our town council members were um spoken to from. Uh many townspeople that were not happy with that, so I'm glad it was addressed at the town council meeting, and Tom Mullen was very clear. With how that's supposed to be.
Yeah, and and this, and he pointed out the the legal reasons of why we should not be. Discussing things, it's that was out of our control.
Well, again, it would be horrible that if somebody spoke at our meeting, thinking they were being heard by the right board that could make a decision. And then not attend the ZBA meeting, that would be an injustice, that would, again, a failure on our part to not recognize that and control it. Any items unanticipated? Alright, before we do adjourn, I just wanna say, Ernie, um I don't know who you are, but I love your background shot, that's close to my picture from my office window. In Boston in the Seaport. Oh, you're on mute, I can't hear you. That's okay. So with that. Entertainer motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
And as always, thank you for your time. Oh, Ernie?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
I I unplugged my mic, I'm uh, we're a member, Marianne and I are members of the uh chamber in Wakefield. For several years, I have quite an interest in Wakefield. I'm a commercial real estate broker for forty years and I knew Jay dirty when I came out of school, so. And uh and I'm similar, but smaller though, you know, and uh. I was on the Finance Committee in Linfield, we lived there for twenty six years and I. Helped projects get going like Market Street and so on and uh. Uh started the thing that got the schools rebuilt and that sort of stuff and uh. So I have, and we're in Stoneham now, it's Stonehill Towers for ten years and Wakefield's in between. There and I'm still in Rotary in Linfield, so I have an interest in your town and. It's, I haven't found a lot of action in Stoneham, so if there's action.
Well, I I suggest that you move to Wakefield and um when the position for the planning board is open, apply.
So, anyway.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, thanks, everybody, meeting uh uh meeting adjourned.
Thanks, have a good night.
Bye, good night.